I would like to call the order, the city of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for July 5th, 2023. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Baldwin, here.
Muncie.
Here.
Leo.
Dean.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
You have a form?
Thank you. On item three, agenda changes, I would like to propose two changes to the agenda, two additions that would reflect the conversation we had at our workshop two weeks ago. I'd like to, and it's timely, I'd like to get a recap on the Fourth of July costs for yesterday's events and also current status of our legal fees. And could I have a motion for a second to do that, or do we just do, do we just do a roll call? Do we need to make a?
Motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
So I'll move to include the items, July 4 recap and legal fees summary for the agenda.
Second.
Very good. And I think this, are there any other, well, if we should vote on this one, let's have a roll, roll call clerk? Voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, any opposed? I hear none, passes. Do council members have any other changes to the addition to the agenda? Hearing none, I will add those items then to BE, Fourth of July recap and F, current status of legal fees. And great, and we do have legal counsel here to help us through both of these items. So very good, well, not the July legal, okay. I don't believe we have any guest speakers today. Covers that, that takes us to item five, public comment on agenda items only. Please approach the podium if you wish to offer public comment, limited to three minutes. Anyone in the audience wishes to offer public comment? Seeing none, we'll open it up to participants on the Zoom call. If there's anyone on the Zoom that would wish to make a public comment, please identify yourself. I see no hands raised, nor do I. All right, well, with that, we'll close, we'll close item five, public comment. That takes us to our discussion items for this workshop. Item A is an ethics policy discussion. And I believe it's in your packet on page.
Page two.
Page two. And I believe we took the liberty of asking counsel to, legal counsel to do a little analysis for us and should we kick it off there?
Absolutely, so there's, there's not really a whole lot to report here.
Okay.
I would just kind of preliminarily note that, you know, state law creates kind of a framework and baseline ethical obligations, and then it's up to individual municipalities and agencies to create anything that goes beyond that. In my office's experience, having a separate standalone ethics policy is more of the exception than the rule. So I think in a lot of respects, the city is kind of head of the curve there. We reviewed the policy that the city has, there's documentation from both 2004 and 2008 pertaining to the council's ethical standards, and there wasn't really any red flags, nothing that needed immediate attention that came up. So I guess unless there are specific questions or inquiries or areas of concern, there's, there's not really anything troubling that we identified, and it's the city's policies, it's, it's pretty comprehensive.
Okay, Ryan, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
With that, I'll open it up to council for any discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon, everybody, thank you for being here. This is an item that I brought up a number of months ago, and when I first joined council as to the city's responsibility to its citizens, that we have a ethics policy that reflects current standards, and in beginning to look at the ordinance that the city has, as the attorney has mentioned, the last update was in 2008, so that's 15 years ago. Contemporary standards have changed quite a bit as regards to government ethical policies and behaviors, and I would just encourage the council to take this, and my recommendation would be what a lot of communities have done in the state of Michigan, according to MML has established a study committee, very short timeframe to evaluate what's in place, come back after a certain amount of time with some suggestions on changes, no changes, updates, whatever the case may be. That's the direction I'd like to see the council go.
Sir Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask, what state laws, we can bring up our municipal attorneys, that state laws create frameworks, and state of Michigan has it. What state laws specifically do you think that are not being, or what law, what do you think is not being addressed that the state has already propped up?
Yeah, Councilmember Baldwin, good question, I'm not saying that the, the city is not compliant with state law, what I'm saying is that 15-year-old policy is, in my opinion, out of date with what contemporary standards are.
It will be addressed.
I would just ask that the council look at it, make sure that it is contemporary with other municipal policies around the, around the city, or pardon me, around the, around the state. MML has a very good document out on their website that goes into a great amount of depth about what different things communities should look at. I'm just asking that the city take a moment, evaluate where we are, if we need updates, if there's areas that we're missing, or?
We believe that we're falling short by not having addressed it.
Reporting standards.
Pardon me?
Reporting standards.
Standards on what?
Many governments now require that council members and city employees disclose on a yearly basis their relationships with businesses, personal relationships, I have to do this for my job, just to make sure that we're very transparent in terms of anything that we might have that might interfere with council business or government business.
Have been any accusations or?
I've, I've not heard any specific accusations.
Thank you.
Any other discussion among the council?
Well, if I may, I'd like to request an accounting of the time it took to gather all this information on the behalf of our legal counsel. So perhaps at our next meeting, we can have an accounting of how much we've paid our attorneys to look into this information. Second, you all hear me talk about the Michigan Municipal League every week, every time we meet. And not only do they have, we have an MML ethics handbook, which is updated by the MML board, which are representatives from every municipality, but we also have several one-pagers through the MML that are available to us. One is the MML misconduct and office of public officials, the MML standards of conduct, and the MML contracts of public servants. I'd hate to see us beat a dead horse when a lot of this has already been handled. Plus, we have an ordinance that was drafted in 2004 and amended in 2008 that more than appropriately covers the MML guidelines and has met the satisfaction of our attorneys.
Well, we've, we've lost Ryan for the moment, but do you mind just making sure that you, you tag your, your hours billed to work on this? And I appreciate you guys making this a matter of priority, but it'd be nice for, to be responsive to council member Lewis's request, if you guess, if we could just get a breakout of what that cost to do this, that'd be great. Any other, any other thoughts?
I just, um, you know, when this came up, I think I might have missed the workshop where this was discussed originally. But I don't know if this was something that we talked about in the strategic planning, if this was something that we needed to address. You know, maybe it's something that we can talk about at the next strategic planning on something, if this is a study group we would want to do, we could have that discussion there, but at this point, it was not part of our priorities as far as doing something along those lines. I feel like what we have here all seems on par, seems good to me.
Thanks. Any other thoughts?
I would just concur with Lauren that this is an issue that if, if unless there is some issue in regards to, you know, as, as I read it, a lot of this is about relationships and you know, where there might be sort of boundary issues, and, and if there is no accusation or no issue present, I believe that this sort of derails us, and I believe that issues like this need to go through strategic planning unless there is a specific reason to sort of, you know, pull the car to the, off the road. I mean, I think we all, seven of us, plan accordingly for the year. So that's all I have.
Great. Any other thoughts on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to just respond to some of the comments that are made, look, this, my opinion, this is not a big lift. This is pretty straightforward. And I would also counter that, just because there's not been a specific report, doesn't mean that you shouldn't take a look at a policy. This, we're, we're, we are working hard to be a good government, responsible to the people that we serve. And I would equate it with an HR policy, I would equate it with a, you know, public relations policy, I would equate with any policy the city may have. It should be reviewed on a regular basis to remain, to remain contemporary and reflect community standards. That's simply what I'm saying, this is not a long drawn out strategic process, this is a policy review. That's simply what I'm suggesting that we do, it's that simple.
May I, I, I also would say, Russ, that each of us has several projects that we talk to our constituents about on a regular basis, whether it's parking, whether it's landscaping parks, et cetera, et cetera. So we all have these issues, I, I understand what you're saying to you, it feels very important, it's not a heavy lift, but each of us probably has three or four issues off the bat that we would like to see addressed. And that's why we have strategic planning, just like you have strategic planning at your job, I have it at my job, so that we can all move as a body, and that is a new process that we've implemented, and it, I believe it works quite well. And, and I would caution you to, you know, be considerate of the fact that each person here has at least one or two issues that they feel strongly about, and the strategic planning is the correct venue for that.
I respectfully disagree, this is a policy discussion, not a strategic planning item.
Well, I, I honestly, in all respects, sir, I think if, if we were to take on this, you know, we might as well look at the entire city charter, and that is a heavy lift. So I mean, to split out things that should be routine in any municipality, I mean, you're basically opening up the can of worms, let's just look at the whole charter again, and, and, and refresh the charter, which is also quite, quite old.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, in response to that, the charter has very limited language on ethics, very limited. This is an ordinance that's a city pass, so that would be an ordinance review if you want to put it in those terms.
And then we could go, I suppose, form committees to look at every ordinance then, I suppose. And, you know, I'm not sure that the constituents really want us to look at every single ordinance on a certain sunset basis. What I hear is, I hear, I would like better cell service. I hear things like, you guys got to figure out events. I hear things like, you know, let's make sure that we have got the right short-term rental policies in place. So I think, you know, there are a lot of nice things to do, but it does take, in a democracy, the agreement of everyone around this table to give direction to staff. So I think we've heard from everybody on this, if there's any further discussion, I'm open to continuing it, but I think everyone said their piece on this. Very good. Let's go to six B, a recommendation of an award for roadwork. This is, I believe, on page?
Page 10, Mr.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Yes.
Peter from F and V is online.
Lovely, thank you.
Great.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if I can, go ahead, thank you.
Good news, so we went out to, for bids for the roadwork assessed, associated with West, East, Tackin, and Taylor. The bids came in under our estimated budget.
Oh, nice.
Which is a rare thing, so good to see. And then, so I do have a recommendation for you at your Monday meeting, it does include a continued contingency of $36,000, and then also we have the engineers administration costs included, so total budget of $580,000 will be in front of you on Monday.
Very good, we have a sample motion for Monday, excellent, any discussion among the council?
F and V is on the line.
Yeah, any questions for F and V?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know we came in under budget, at least the proposed budget, what was the original estimated? Oh, I can get back to you on that one. Yeah, please, that'd be great to have Monday's meeting, thank you.
Great. Any other further discussion on this item?
It's good to see it happening.
Yeah.
Damn roads.
For sure.
Wonderful. Okay, then we are at six C, Engineering Services for Roadwork. Page, I don't have the pages on these.
16.
16, thank you.
There it is. Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So this was included in the discussion I just had.
Okay.
All right. Wrapped into the cost.
Wrapped into it, okay, so it's a separate motion, though, no?
Oh, no, I did a two-for-one for you on Monday.
Okay, so it's wrapped into that motion, okay, wonderful, okay. Do we need them as separate items for Monday, or can you?
You can cover both these items with, with the one motion, I, I broke them out in a sample motion for you.
Okay, all right, yep, maybe just consolidate them for Monday then?
Yep, no, they, they, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
For new business?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Yeah, got you.
Yeah, if you, if we could. Great, that takes us to six D, Water AMP proposal, asset management plan. Got it on page 19.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So as you know, that we're, we're working with Eagle to manage our water system. We know that we need to have an asset management plan, and this is a proposal from F and V to help us with that. So this will be on your agenda for Monday.
Excellent, excellent, I'm pleased to report, I had a nice afternoon in Grand Rapids, got to spend some time with Mayor Bliss, who was very, very nice. We were at a residence house along with the EPA Administrator Regan and Representative Shulton, our, one of Michigan's Congresswomen. And who else was there? Oh, Senator Winnie Brinkes, our state senator. We were replacing a lead service line, I've, I've actually now got a 12-inch piece of lead pipe, if anybody ever wants to see, see one. Um, I, 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 we play clue, yeah.
Yeah, the lead pipe.
That would be fun, yeah, that's it, y'all. The mind boggles at the possibilities. But in, in any event, it was a really, it's good to see it happening, there's a lot of infrastructure money out there. That was sort of the message that, that was being discussed, it was a message of collaboration, cooperation, both federal, state, and local to get this stuff done. You know, I was, I was commiserating with Mayor Bliss, you know, I feel like we've got a problem, we've got like 500 lead service lines in, in our community that need to be replaced. She's got 14,000.
Oh, good.
You know, so it's, it's a lot of work for everyone, we're not alone in this, we're not alone, and that's, you know, why we've got to be on top of trying to get some of this grant and loan funding, although it's going to be competitive. So in any event, sorry for that, that sidebar, but I thought you might be interested, it was a, it was fun to watch them, how quickly they can actually replace these lines now.
That's great.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just say that, just when you think that constituents don't read these packets in detail, I was, I was with someone last night who's very skilled financial advisor CPA and so forth, he said Baker Tilly is one of the best firms out there for the type of work that you're engaging them for. So he's very complimentary of them, he's worked with them in the past, and so just when you think people don't read this stuff, they do.
Wonderful, cool.
Just good feedback.
Good, but it's good endorsement for them, excellent, anything else from council on this?
No, it's great, good to see it happen.
Right. All right, so this, this takes us to our new additions, six E. We just came off what I think was a really wonderful Independence Day celebration, I had a great time. I'm feeling a bit tired, I, I, and, and full disclosure, full disclosure.
Oh, that was great.
DJ House Shoes did invite me up on stage at 11 o'clock. And, and let me spin a couple of records, so I may have, I may have violated our noise, outdoor, outdoor amplified music thing by maybe a couple of minutes. So I apologize, but it was a really cool Paul Anka cover of Nirvana, so I thought it was, I thought it was worth spinning it, yeah.
Oh, Lord.
So I, 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 just full disclosure, I may have, I may have, I may have pushed the envelope on the, not only the dress code, but on the, on one of our ordinances, but anyways. But we, we do, we would like to get to know, and I think you're prepared, Ryan, to give us a sense of how we did, it was, you know, once again, we're last minute dot com, unfortunately, on, on events lately, but how we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I could start first with the side, outside of this picture, which is wonderful, and you all can get together, I mean, this picture represents quite a bit. Emergency services, you know, shout out to them, yeah, fire department, Alleghen County Sheriff, Michigan State Police, they were out in full force, and others, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on with this that you, you would never know about, and we don't really talk about, but they, they protect us and they do a really good job, so shout out to them. Also, our Department of Public Works, right? Trash, just taking care of the masses, you know, it's a long day for, for everyone that puts on these events. So first with the, the parade route, I, I got a lot of compliments on the route itself. And so shout out to Bertie Holly, she was the one that organized the event and did an amazing job. I think she had a flag.
Yes, she did.
Yeah, she had a flag, yes. Yeah. So, you know, she's amazing, and we appreciate that, so the, the parade was a success, as far as I know. And then maybe next slide, let's see what else we got here. Oh, you know, oh, there's the mayor in his hat, I just love.
I love the hat.
I did that already, oh, yeah, so let's go into the, the nighttime festivities, can we actually play that, or no, it's just a picture?
Hmm, too bad.
Can you double-click on that, maybe, or no? Oh.
No.
Not going to play.
Shoot.
It's okay.
It was awesome, I was, I was there by the speaker, it was awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, no worries, okay, next slide. Okay, so Eddie, the laser, laser music fireworks show, in my opinion, was pretty epic. If you recall, you adopted this whole plan a couple of months ago, and I thank you for that. And the idea was that we're going to ease people into the idea of having a laser show. When I first started this, I couldn't get a fireworks vendor, right, so I just pivoted quickly to lasers. Then the fireworks vendor came around, and so I, I can do this now, so I'm like, all right, that's cool, but I already lined up the laser vendor, but all right, we'll do lasers and fireworks, and then since we're doing both of those things, we'll have music. We talked about this a while ago, and this is the, the original budget I presented to you is on your, our left. So fireworks, lasers, barges, music, stage and lighting, graphic design, lodging, food and bev. And I will mention this off the bat, if it was not for the city doing this, typically you would have a business association doing this, and they would front this cost, they would pay for all this stuff. But, and however, we don't, so I let you all know that if there was a shortfall, that you would have to pick up the tab. So here we are. So we did, you know, people helped me out to like work these costs down, so the actuals, like fireworks, we got the, our vendor down on that price, laser show, got them down on their price, barges, I don't know, maybe they'll still cut us a break, probably not, but that was the cost for that. Music, I'll talk about that in a little more detail, stage and lighting. Helen, thank you.
Good job, Helen.
We got them way down.
Yeah.
And then just the graphic design work, you know, my, I had some family helping me out with that, so that was free to the city. Lodging, I got, you know, some people to help me out, Garnett included, Sean Steele. So we are able to put up our, our vendors traveling from out of state, very helpful. And then there's your food and bev costs. Again, this is, so when I worked in Wisconsin, we had a, we, we did performances, and we always had something called a rider, right, I mean, if, if you ever worked with musical performances, you, you know, they have their riders. Sometimes they can be really challenging, like I've had people like, I want heirloom tomatoes, but only from California, and it's like, you know, really specific stuff, and I'm like, oh my.
Only green M and M's.
Yeah, well, yeah. That's a thing.
Yes, Skittles, but take, take out Skittles, but you know, only, right. So this is not unusual for, for any performer coming in. And so, yeah, we had DJ House Shoes come in from California out of LA, had a chauffeur, Mr. Steve Townsend, who works with Michael at the wine shop, he went and picked him up, we had Ryan Cummins go drop him off today, so he saved the cost. Um, yeah, and so that's the expense side, and we talked about the revenue, and so city of Sagatuck, we initially talked about 10,000 bucks. So that's still there, right, of course, we asked Douglas for 4,000, you know, they kicked in 1,000, and we appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I should mention the Douglas Police Department, so they helped out.
Oh, they did.
They helped with traffic.
Oh, they did, okay.
And loading zone, so we had to load the fireworks in Douglas, so they were, they were on site, and so, you know, they have some resources.
All right.
Yeah, involved with that, asked the township for 4,000, they said no. CVB, 10,000, awesome job, they came through, 10,000, great, that's there.
Yeah.
Sponsors and donations, little disappointed, although I was a one-man band trying to get sponsors and donations, so I wish I would have had more time to get out there and do the footwork. And so on this note, you know, I did reach out to a lot of the businesses, I traveled around, walked around, went to the restaurants, talked to them, just let them know that this event is different from previous years, and that they should be excited about it in the fact that we don't have a beer tent, we're not serving food, so it just looks like preparing them to, you know, just have food and beverage ready. And that was one of the complaints that I've heard in my first two years here, is that, you know, you're taking business away from us on these very busy holidays, and I'm like, okay, well, now this is a gift to you, and you're welcome. And then another note on this, and it's a very serious one, when the city puts on these types, types of events, I think the mentality, and I understand it, is that businesses feel like they've already paid into tax dollars, right? And so why should they give more? And I get it, so it's, it's much better to have a separate organization put on these types of events.
Yeah.
100%, people are much more willing to give, my experience, to a non-for-profit, somebody else, CVB, anything, but if it's the city, dude like me showing up, they're like, oh, you're going to give me a violation, or you asking for money, or what, what's going on?
What was your total on sponsors and donors, did you get any?
I don't have that tally in front of me, but it's not good, I mean, I'll just, Sadaba, you know, they had no money, I reached out to them, so.
Okay.
All right, so I'll get, I'll get a detailed expense report, I do want to dive back into the music, because I know that was a little different for folks. So House Shoes coming out of LA, how did you find House Shoes? My colleague from Detroit, Michigan, who's in, in music production and film production, introduced me to House Shoes. And again, at the time, we were just trying to find a good person, a good human at the time, and so we lined him up, and I think he did a bang-up job personally.
Yeah.
So that's how we got shoes, yeah, we had, you know, we had to hook them up, we had to find lodging and.
Well, I'm sure it wasn't easy to find somebody available on the Fourth of July at the last minute either. That's what I'm assuming.
Yep, so you know, again, all these things with like House Shoes, like that would normally be taken care of through their music contractor, their rider, that's very typical stuff. But again, the city had to do it, so I'm piecing on it, trying to work through all this. Sorry, all that to say, I will, I will get you a detailed budget report, but I feel pretty good about the event, like everything's been really positive. We did not blow anything up.
Nobody got hurt.
Nobody got hurt.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of people.
Incidents.
To that point, I'll, I'll make a comment, I, I personally, last night, thanked Captain Ennsfield and, and Sergeant Haas for, for their work, and I sent Chief Janik a note expressing the council's gratitude for the hard work that they did, we know it's a long day for them. So I mean, you know, for me, the thing that kept me up, and has kept me up, has been to have a safe event, and the fact that we did, you know, Sergeant Haas at 11:15 or so told me, he's like, nothing, the, the only, the only issue we have, and it's really not anything surprising, is traffic's moving a bit slow getting out of Douglas, but we've got an exit down, you know, to the north of us, so, so it's completely understandable. So, you know, after the tragedy in Park Township and what happened in Alleghen, I'm just thrilled that we got, got the event done safely. I am troubled, I am troubled that our, our neighbors in, in the tri-community, and I really value unity and cooperation. You know, we were with our friends from the Douglas City Council in the parade, we had the manager from the township in the parade, and I love those guys, and I love to collaborate with them. But their communities benefit from these events that we put on, and it is not fair to the taxpayers, the property taxpayers in Sagatuck, to host these parties when, you know, our friends don't show up with, with a dish to pass. You know, and I'm, you know, and I'm prepared at, at the end of the season, at, at, after Labor Day or after the Mount Bald Head Challenge. You start having some hard conversations about, you know. If we need to find other revenue streams, uh, Sagatuck has the ability to do that. And I know how absolutely unhappy some of the people in the community will be if we have to raise. Uh, the non-resident parking fee for Oval Beach. Um, but if we need to find a new revenue stream. To underwrite these events that people expect. And that they benefit from, even though they don't pay taxes here. I'm prepared to entertain that kind of conversation unless uh, some of our friends and our neighbors kind of rethink. How they're gonna show up at our parties when not bring a six pack.
Mayor Dean.
Yeah, please. Yeah.
I do want to say, I did hear some pushback because I did talk to my contacts and.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot, guys. Could you have helped out or whatever? And I did hear a couple of decent arguments when I heard that the township is opposed to fireworks now. With everything being as dry as it, as it is.
Okay.
And uh, the wildlife and all those reasons that I personally don't love fireworks. They were in also, uh, they didn't feel like. And part of this was just because it was last minute, that they weren't talked to about how the event's gonna look, what it should look like or whatever, to set everything up and go, it's gonna be $50,000. How much can we count on you for? They were a little put out by that. And I shouldn't speak, I'm not speaking for everyone, speaking for the people that I spoke to. And also, you know, I mean, if you think about it, Doug was put on Pride. And we didn't, we didn't give him a dollar.
We didn't ask. No.
Didn't ask, though. I.
They didn't ask. But they, and they didn't ask. So I, I'm just like, I, believe me.
And it's the pride organization that put it on, but the city of Douglas didn't. But yeah.
Like, I mean, I would absolutely say like that they should kick in and, and like I said, that's how we wind up in these conversations. Like, hey, guys, thanks for nothing, right? And then I got a little bit of pushback and I went, you know, I gotta say, that's a fair point. And uh, it's at least worth throwing in the mix as long as we're all gonna be talking about. What they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing. I think it's fair to look at how we should approach it. And again. Things when you do them last minute are expensive, more expensive last minute. I tend to shop around. Um, we got on the hook for fireworks and lasers because we weren't gonna do the fireworks because we didn't think we had a thing. So then we wound up having to do both of them. And, you know, I think the people need to look at. While it was expensive, can you imagine the umbrage if we had nothing on the Fourth of July?
I know.
So keep that in mind as we're going through these and, you know, kicking rocks and uh, and beating up Ryan about how it's, so things got.
Right.
Um, he was asked to do a lot in a very short period of time. And uh, we want to have a wonderful event. And I do think that we need to have bigger conversations with the other cities, but we can't decide it's gonna be this way and it's gonna cost us much. Now, how much are you gonna give us? I don't think that's fair.
Yeah, I think going forward, we just, you know, if we can meet up with the township and meet up with Douglas and have a conversation. When we have more time and it's not last minute like it was this year, um, I think it'll be met with, um, you know, greater participation. Um, if we do it next time around. And now that we know going into it, we don't have, you know, Sadaba isn't as strong as it used to be. And we don't. You know, CVB is giving $10,000. That's fantastic. Um, you know, maybe next year there is no fireworks. So then that. Then we can decide, you know, ahead of time what that looks like. And if somebody wants to have fireworks on their own, you know, that's something that could be done. But maybe as a city, we. You know, that might not be something we do going forward. Um, and the other thing is, it was very family friendly. There was lots of kids down there and they loved it. So um, Venetian is a fun adult party on a Friday night. This was very kid friendly and awesome. And that's what Fourth of July is all about is family friendly. And it was just something different for families to enjoy. And I think. A lot of people just loved it.
Yeah, if I may, uh, go ahead, Gregor.
I'm sorry. Um, just wondering, now, first of all, Sadaba nor the CVB ever did a fireworks um demonstration. I know uh, both organizations have fallen. Or have donated money in the past. So Sadaba was never an organization that ever did anything like that. They just did a few small parades along with music in the park. They never did big projects like that, even when they were, you know, at their height. Um, and uh, CVB. The Rotary Club, what I wanted to ask, um, why was the reason that they decided to drop doing the fireworks? They did such a great job of it. Do you know why?
They're opposed to fireworks.
Oh, it was the, okay, it was the issue of fireworks.
Pillar within Rotary, environmental consciousness and fireworks come nowhere close to being environmentally conscious.
So um, they didn't decide to do an alternative like with, with lasers. They just decided they just weren't gonna do the event anymore, the July 4th event.
Nope. They decided to focus at that time, before I became a member, they decided to focus on the Mount Bald Head Challenge and raise money for the Boys and Girls Club. Felt that that was a better use of their time and energy and money they raised. And now Rotary's taken on Venetian as well. So. It just was a matter of priorities for the group.
Yeah, but I think they dropped the fireworks before they took on Venetian. I'm correct.
But like I said, Mount Bald Head Challenge has been a big uh, use of people, volunteers. Helen will. She can help me out here because that's where most of the time and energy has gone with that organization.
Yeah, that's the great event that they've done too.
If you don't want to put, you know, 15, $18,000 into fireworks, but you can put it into the Boys and Girls Club. It'd be an interesting discussion to have with a bigger community of what, what the parents would prefer.
Yeah.
I remember in the past when they did it, um, they, they uh, did a lot of fundraising for, from the, from the small businesses. We used to have that. Remember that temperature gauge we used to have years ago that was over here at the um, information booth? This might have been before you moved here, Garnet. And they used to raise the money and you would see all the businesses that would donate and they would reach that goal every year. Um, so it wasn't really money that, that they were taking out of their pockets. They were just doing the footwork to get the money together.
Priorities and bigger priorities for Rotary is stated is environmental stewardship. And that's actually the green Venetian's all about. All the monies are gonna go into the waterways. All the proceeds rates are gonna go directly to our waterways. And um, you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth and say that we're gonna support the environment and then blow off a bunch of fireworks. It just, they don't match up. It's, it's sad because fireworks are beautiful. I'm of a certain age where I've watched them my whole life and, and loved that they're, I think that they're absolutely gorgeous. Um, but it doesn't necessarily make a great idea.
I'm not debating the fireworks, uh, one way or the other. I'm just saying the event in general, uh, whether they decided to change it. Whether they decided to change it or do the uh, do a, you know, lasers instead. I'm just wondering, you know, it'd be nice, like you were saying, Ryan, um, it'd be nice to have. Uh, these organizations so it doesn't lay on the back of our taxpayers. Uh, we, we have quite a uh, expense here that really wasn't expected. Until last minute. And I'm glad that we did have an event. I'm, I don't regret that. Um, but uh, I think going forward, we'd like to make sure, like, like I had uh, asked, uh, you know, a while back. We'd like to make sure that our donations cover the event the next time. And, and I would be more than willing to help. Uh, uh, you know, if we decide to do this next year, reach out to me early enough. And I will knock on doors and try to get as much money as I can for, for this event and help out with raising funds so that we don't have to worry about the backs of our taxpayers.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Garnet. No, please.
We've had this discussion several times now and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but. I've long advocated for us to take a very proactive approach. And Holly's been on board with me with this since the day we were elected to office. That we need to form a big umbrella economic development organization where funds are used and staff are hired. That focus on the three communities and the projects they have so that we're not, it's not Liz Engel doing Pride. It's not Rotary doing now, you know, it's all together collectively. Otherwise, it's always going to be last minute and it's always going to be folks rushing around banging on the same doors. For donations. And that's, we're all running into this. For, we work with these organizations. They're all like. Hold on, I can't do anymore. And so we have to come to a better place. And that, in my opinion, is a true economic development. That's a heavy lift, but we've had it. We've discussed it at strategic planning. It's kind of gotten bumped off. Sooner or later, we can't, we can't ask the staff. We can't ask the staff. That's not what they're here for. That's not their job. It's not. So we have to be much more proactive about this. And it's all about an economic development organization.
Be nice to uh, to bring that up during your next strategic planning, um, and, and, and stay on it. That might be something we might want to consider.
That is something that we've been talking about. And um, this is, we've said this, this is no, uh, this, we're 100% tourist based economy. And this is no way to run events to pass the hat. And this time, the hat got passed to Ryan. And honestly, I felt Ryan took a big risk doing this because he didn't have to do anything. Frank, frankly, you didn't. Um, because it sort of opens him up to every kind of criticism that there is, but you took it on. But you took it on and you, you know, it, it was great. I, I mean, I, we did something different. We did something artistic. We did something fun. But it's always, because we don't have a reliable funding source for events as Holland, as South Haven, as our competitors do. We are always going to have this fight about, I need more from you. I need more from you. We're passing the hat and, and it's, it's not set up for success. It's set up. It's set up for an argument.
How, how do we fix this? How do we? I agree. How do we bring the right people in, in the, in the tri-community area together to, to have this kind of summit meeting?
I think we need to have a levy on short-term rentals. That's what I think. It needs to be a user-based fee. And I think it's realistic to ask. The rent, the rent, renter population of the tri-communities, at least what we can control maybe of Sagatuck. To, you know, put money into, it's 10 bucks a week or 20 bucks a week, whatever. When I go to Cleveland and work or Chicago, I have to pay a, a Airbnb tax. There's tax or a hotel tax.
It's hefty in Chicago too.
Yeah. And, and it's, I just don't, the, the issue that we have is like, well, why should 900, less than 900 people? You know, pay for X and pay for Y. And we have 3,000 acres of parkland. Why should 3,000 people foot the bill for 3,000 acres? That Douglas enjoys and Township enjoys and tourists enjoy. And that, that's, I pursued that at strategic planning. You all accepted it. That's, I mean, that's not an immediate. Fix, but.
I'm, I'm glad to see that we've gotten, and I'll get to you, Russ. I'm, I'm glad to see that um, we've got the chair of our short-term rental committee here, our work.
Holly?
Taking notes. Wonderful. Holly, your ears are burning, I'm sure. Um, I'm, I'm happy to hear. One thought, I mean, you know, I just keep, once again, I just. I, the, the sigh that I let out when I, when I just heard that there had not been a safety incident was, was palpable last night. And, and. I fear that if we don't, and I, I agree with the arguments about fireworks and, and, and all the econo, uh, environmental and other issues associated with them. But it, it, I do fear that if we don't. Give the people sort of what they expect, they will bring their own. And we may have a more dangerous situation, which unfortunately, we saw in reality uh, occur in Park Township on Monday. So I, I do worry about that. But Russ, you had some thoughts?
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. Mayor, I uh, just to kind of dial this back a bit. Great conversation. I love all these blue sky ideas. I think the simple question in my mind is. What does the city currently have responsibility for when it comes to events like this? My experience is that the city has been a financial contributor, both hard costs, contributions as well as soft costs. And that means DPW. Providing, you know, street enclosed signs and things of that nature. I think that's where the council needs to go. I had a conversation with the mayor earlier today about this. I think the city does have an opportunity to stop for a moment. Council has, has an opportunity to stop for a moment and say, what exactly do we want to be in the business of? We should be in the business of fixing our streets, making sure everything looks good for our visitors. Event planning, I question whether that's a core mission of the city. Um, so anyway, I'd look forward to more conversations. I also want to ask council member Leo, you keep saying 3,000 acres. 3,000 acres of what?
Parkland.
City doesn't have 3,000 acres of parkland.
Yeah, it's probably. Am I, am I, is it 300 acres? And I misspeaking?
270 for the airport and then.
Like the dunes.
Uh, oh, all of, all of it's at Oval Beach. Is it 3,000? I think it is 3,000.
Yeah, include the natural area in that. Okay, thank you. Like, kept hearing that number. So, thank you.
That was.
Great. Um, I think this was a really good conversation. And what, and you know, I, I, I do, I, I agree with everything that's been said here. I. You did a great job with the event. Um, but it's not, I mean, honestly, it's not what we hired you to do. We didn't hire you to go wa- walking and knocking on doors saying, hi, I'm Ryan from. You know, the city, I'm not here to.
Please give me mine.
I, I could, I could give you a violation, but if you want to contribute, I mean, no, we.
Yeah, that would take us back to the ethics, but that would take us back to the ethics discussion. No.
Right.
No, so.
That's what I was. So this is a very good conversation and I'm glad we've had it. Uh, this takes us to a breakdown of legal fees. We have legal counsel here. And I'd like to start with legal counsel because I just want you to keep us uh, in the right lane in terms of anything that should. Be discussed in closed session versus what we can discuss in open session. And I want you to keep, I want you to guide us if you would.
Yeah, so and, and, and the remarks that I've prepared today are based on invoices that we provided to the city. Those are, those are public records. Uh, what I'm not here to do today is get into like litigation strategy, um, or any kind of. Specific pending litigation, things of that matter. Um, so it, what I understand the, the council desire to be is to have kind of just a generalized discussion of. What the legal fees are and, and how that money's being attributed to. Uh, so just to give kind of a, a very, uh, you know, kind of a thousand foot view here, uh, that money. Uh, sorry, the, the invoice is kind of fall into one of two buckets. There is litigation costs. And then there's everything else. Um, we, we looked at invoices uh, from all 2022 up to the present. Uh, and the city is spending about 75% of its legal bills on litigation. The remaining 25% is on non-litigation matters. So that's kind of generalized routine work. Um, I think if you prorate it, it, it comes out somewhere to the amount of about 140,000 a year. Uh, which is the non-litigation costs that includes, um, you know, one-time projects that pop up. It includes recurring costs. It's meeting attendance. It's, um, you know, just generalized consulting with staff. It's zoning and planning work. And in.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Foyad stuff for the city park. Uh, contract reviews, lease agreements, labor and employment is, is a, we've, we've done a decent amount of labor and employment work with you. Um, there's, you know, specific projects like the water and sewer stuff that's happening right now. Um, there are. I, I think a not insubstantial amount of these projects that are kind of the result of maybe deferred maintenance is a way to put it, but there are. Things that have been kind of lurking out there for a while. I think the water and sewer agreements are a great example, uh, that have kind of recently reared their head. Um, a lot of the zoning and planning costs, I think there's been a, a little bit. Of a transitory period, uh, now having new zoning administration in place. Um, so there's a lot of work, uh, both kind of. Uh, you know, transitioning in the way projects are handled now, uh, as well as dealing with uh. Prior approvals, um, and, and so kind of some uncertain territory there. So i- in, in our experience for a municipality of this size with the amount of regulations that it has. And the, you know, number of unique land use considerations that it has being on the countless river, you know, the lake. Um. We think 140 is, is pretty routine for that kind of work. The, unless there's any specific questions about kind of the routine costs, um, and that, that also includes, I don't know if I said it, you know, having an attorney present at meetings like I am here. Uh, consulting with staff, unless there's any specific questions about that, we can move into the other bucket. See, done.
Do, this is just a question. Um, with their attendance at all of the different meetings, are there ones that we can say, we don't need you at this meeting? Like historic commission, if there's something going on that doesn't seem like it requires an attorney? Are there ways that we can maybe cut costs there?
So I don't think they attend all meetings.
Okay.
Attend all meetings. And I think, I, I think we ran the numbers and the monthly cost to have an attorney present at the meetings that we do attend, that runs between three and a half. And like $5,000 a month. And the ones we do attend, those are the council workshops, regular meetings, as you're aware, I'm sure. Uh, we do planning commission meetings, ZBA meetings, and then I'm appearing virtually to the short-term rental.
Yeah, and, and, and just to add to that, I, I think we heard Chris Patterson say at a, a council meeting that. Well, a couple of points. Um, one, you should have your attorneys here at all your council meetings.
Yeah, okay.
Two, um, is that there's certain efficiencies with having them present because when they go back to their office and they start jamming on paperwork. If they're here and they understand the conversation, um, that's actually less time spent like back and forth on the phone. So it actually probably saves you some money.
Good, good.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's value in kind of the preventative maintenance aspect of that. And especially when you talk about, I mean, boards like the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals. That is also an opportunity to make those decisions more defensible should they be challenged.
Thanks for explaining that. I appreciate that.
Of course. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I, I, um, and again, I just want to make sure that I understood this correctly. So. We got about $140,000 a year that we spend in what I would deem to be non-litigation costs, right on average.
Yeah, it's, it's.
So, you know, 60,000 of that is attendance at meetings. Um, so. Where this came up from my mind was, you know, you know, some comments I'm hearing in the community from different people that watch this pretty closely. And really what I intended to do was not to have a discussion regarding the litigation strategy of the city because. I've talked with a double of citizens and they've said, look, you're going down the right path on this. No one likes that expense, but it's important for us to do that. My concern was more, can we do something about some of maybe the not or the controllable costs, which you've talked a little bit about? That's what I'm asking is, you know, just a, a little bit of attention to that. Make sure that we are spending the money appropriately, $60,000 a year for attendance at meetings. That, that's quite a bit. That, that's quite a bit.
We're spending about $2 million or whatever the number is ridiculous amount because we didn't have somebody at a meeting, Russ.
Yeah, it, it, it's hard to quantify. And I will say that the, the meeting costs here, they reflect, you know, both personal attendance at meetings and also, you know, prep time before meetings, consulting with staff about meeting things, reviewing meeting materials. But I mean, and that's, you know, I, I guess I'll say, I, I certainly see the value of having someone from our office here, but we serve at the pleasure of the council. If there's alternative approaches that, you know, you want to.
You would like to respond? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, again, this is not a criticism of the legal services provided.
Certainly.
That's not the, it's not even a criticism. It's more a thoughtful, let's make sure we're talking about this on a regular basis. And so as a council, we understand what's being spent where. And again, I point back to controllable versus non-controllable costs. They say the non-controllable costs are the litigation because we have strategy we're following. And we're presumably going to continue to follow that. It's the nine, it's the controllable that I just want to make sure we have a good vision on.
I, I would like to draw a straight line between ethics and having the attorneys. Um, as someone who came on this council four years ago, I can tell you that, uh, one thing all of us have strived to do is to professionalize, uh, the way the city ran. And I think the legal bills speak for themselves. And I think this is painful and it's been expensive, but it represents the work that was needed to professionalize the way the city runs. And we had to do that in a very, uh, above-board way. And, uh, we needed to make sure that we were doing everything, um, the way it needed to be done. So.
Any, any other observations from council members?
Yeah, if I may.
Go ahead, Garn.
Yeah, you know, we have the choice to either be reactive or proactive. And, you know, following up on what Holly said, um, where we were four years ago, and then what we implemented as far as strategic planning, that became a very proactive approach. And this component is yet another very proactive component of that, um, to help us make sure that we never, never get into the situation that we are now with a certain litigation.
Yeah, I'm, I, I agree Garn and, and Holly well said, as long as I'm mayor, if any chair of any commission or, or, or board or asks for legal resources, they will get legal resources. And as long as I'm on this council, I will be an advocate for having legal counsel at our meetings. Full stop. So I think you guys are doing a great job. Go ahead.
The one thing that I will say that might be helpful is that if we see more than one attorney here, maybe we can understand why the other one is, they're, they're working on something different. Probably, I mean, I understand how it goes. They, one of them might be working on short-term rentals, one of them might be working on our litigation. So I can understand where, why there might be two. But I think that sometimes that that's a, a, a hard swallow for somebody if they see that there's two attorneys.
Sure.
At the meeting. So I would say if there's going to be more than one at our meet that are planning our council meetings, it might be nice just to have a heads up as to why they're with representative.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we, we're a small town, but once again, we deal with incredibly com- complicated issues. Uh, we are dealing with very sophisticated counterparties. Um, you know.
To minimize the, the fact that they would have to catch up. Like if you, to catch up on zoning and planning, you'd have to, and you wouldn't be able to ask the questions in real time. And all the stuff that they're, they're able to do when they are physically present at the meeting, I think is invaluable. And I don't want to discount the fact that they would actually really have to catch up.
The continuity is another key piece. The continuity that having council is getting the running pulse of how this council is operating, the issues that we deal with. Because some of these things we deal with take time. Um, so I, I, I find council's presence here to be absolutely invaluable. And I think it's in the best interest of the community.
Yes, loss of continuity is expensive.
Uh, yes.
I appreciate this discussion though, because I think there's optics out there that, you know, the people in town talk about the amount that we spend on attorneys. And it's just nice to have this conversation. So there's an explanation as to why it's being done the way it's being done.
Also, I requested recently that we get quarterly breakdowns of what's being spent litigation for, that it's from the treasure. Any good accounting functions show is how, how we break it down within litigation. And obviously we can't, you know, go into too much about that, but you know, and we also need to keep people posted. Good article in the first record day about the good news that we had last Monday for, like we're making progress. Things are going, you know, things are going really well and we're getting a benefit from this. So, um, I think we can do a better job of messaging. We talk about breaking out the dollars. We can do a better job of messaging. We talk about why someone needs to be here. And we can do better job of messaging sometimes when we talk about the results. I thought Mayor Dean did a wonderful job last week when he talked about the results of that meeting and, or the court date and worked really well.
I, I, I. Well, yeah, thank you, Helen. And I agree with you. Um, I, I, our treasurer is not here, but, um, I, I come from a world where our shareholders expected to get a quarterly update on how we were performing. And I, I, I would, would like that. I, I would support that if the rest of the council supports it, uh, that we would ask our treasurer to write us quarterly updates on how we are tracking on, on these things. But I, I, you know, I come from a world where shareholders want a quarterly update and they make, you know, yeah, we made that available. It's, it's just good governance. So I, I would be very supportive of that. Um, anything else on this one, uh, before we wrap up our discussion items for today? Nope. Great. Uh, then we are now at item, uh, seven, public comment. Uh, this is wide open, three minutes. Anyone in the audience that wishes to offer a public comment, please feel free. Uh, sir, please join us. And if you could just, uh, for the clerk's benefit, state your name and, and where you reside. Uh, we'd be grateful.
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Jimmy Green. I reside at 3895 West Cabaret Trail, Saginaw, Michigan. I didn't plan to speak, so I actually wrote it out in the back room. So, um, I'm CEO, Jimmy Green Associates, and I work in Lansing as registered lobbies for a number of nonprofits and minority-owned builders and contractors. I was trying to count the number of city councils, township boards, villages that I've spoken at over my 20 years in public policy. And I lost count after about 50. And it's always been to either admonish, contest, challenge, or sue, but never to say, don't do anything until now. I didn't come here, like I said, to speak, but when I saw the ethics issue on your agenda, I felt compelled to give fair warning before you opened that Pandora's box. It's the little things that become bigger things that destroy beautiful communities like Sagatuck. There are communities like Ottawa County that used issues like this that literally superseded state law and MML rules and processes. And there are Ottawa counties like this spreading all across this state. They become witch hunts. They destroy trust and ultimately the culture of a community. I can safely speak for a vast number of, of people that come into this community that shudder at the thought that this becomes one of those communities, a stay away from community as opposed to a come to. I've seen people make a single mistake under these ethics issues and have an entire body of exemplary professional and volunteer work and have that person's ethics questioned all for a mistake. It's subjectivity that creates danger. Now I just heard you mention legal fees and just wait until you take on ethics. Creating a problem where there is none, you'll find that won't be cheap. It's the little things. I've been so blessed to have traveled this state, this entire state, and Sagatuck is my go-to, my come-to. And I'm lucky because I can go anywhere. I'm here a lot. And when I retire, it's where I want to live. Don't let the little things change a culture into a culture that most of us run away from every single day in Lansing. Sagatuck is the few places where us crazy political people can go to escape that. I hope you leave that Pandora's box closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, anyone else in the audience? So.
Bobby Gant, 341 Main Street. Hi, everyone.
Hello. Hello.
Lovely day yesterday. Congratulations to the city. Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, in terms of your event and economic planning frustrations, um, I love the discussion that you had. And I would remind everybody, although I think you all know this, that there are plenty of people around Sagatuck who have a lot of experience in terms of that kind of planning. Um, and, um, and we do have this thing called the tri-community plan that you might be able to launch off of in terms of bringing the communities together and finding people who can, outside of councils, actually plan for the year, what we want to do to work together. So just, um, to remind us all of that because it's sort of, we, in the rush of time, we sometimes forget. And, um, I have a lot of sympathy for what you all just experienced because I've been there. So, um, and in terms of what Jimmy just said and, uh, budgeting and legal cost, um, one of the things that I do miss when I am engaged with the city and budgeting is that there are no quarterly reports. We don't know until the end of the year or when something happens that's unexpected, how we're doing, uh, relative to budget. So if you could think about that, I think it would be really helpful, not only to all of you in terms of, um, uh, all of the work you have to do, but also to, uh, uh, commissioners as well as just citizens. So thank you. But, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, any, one, uh, yeah, please.
I'll just add, uh, one other thought to a great discussion and, and I.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. We don't know who you. I, I, sorry. I, I know. Jamie's always having to correct me. Holly Anderson, 567 Wirick in Sagatuck. Um, I love the discussion and, um, and topics like, you know, lawyers being here and ethics and, um, and accountability and reporting are all really important. What's interesting with the lawyers is, is making sure, and I think we do a really good job with us in, in serving on the planning commission and the short-term rental. It's really good to have a lawyer there because we've had discussions where we've needed to tap into their perspective. So I, I love it that that's available to us. Um, and things like ethics, I mean, totally important. I mean, totally important, but if those kinds of things, if, if we can draw from MML, I mean, let's not reinvent the wheel when there are great best practices that we can build on. Um, because investing, you know, our own dollars on things that already exist, then I do think you wonder, well, what, what are we solving for that we would need to go out and, um, and do that? So anyway, I appreciate all you do. Big kudos to you, Ryan, and all the people who worked, uh, yesterday. Nice job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? I don't think we have anybody else in the audience.
Your buddy.
We have the opportunity in current more billable hours, but no, I'm sorry. Um, uh, with that, I will open up the Zoom to folks in the audience that wish to offer any public comment, uh, looking for hands raised. I see none. Jamie, do you see any hands raised? Okay. Well, that will conclude our public comment period for this workshop. Uh, we have correspondence. We do have a border review vacancy. I'll note that in correspondence. Uh, that takes us to council comments. Um, why don't we start with, uh, you Garnet?
Okay. Uh, yesterday was fantastic. Um, a great day all around. And, um, I look forward to finding a solution to, uh, the issue for next year so that we're, we're kind of ahead of this game. I think Birdie stepping up and doing the parade was the first step and she did a fantastic job. Uh, you know, Miss Personality herself. So it was, I took several pictures of just people, people lined up for the parade, people all the way down Butler. And it was just, it's really very cool. And, uh, it says a lot for our community that we can bring that many people to town in one day and have no major accidents. Knock on wood. So thank you all very much. And I, I'm going to, when our agenda comes out for next year for approval, I'm going to suggest that we, out of kindness to each other and the staff, take the workshop immediately following the Fourth of July. Take it as an extended holiday.
That would be nice.
It, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just a consideration for all of us. Um, I think I'll, I'll be bringing that back up again when we approve that agenda because it's time to give us all a break. So that's it.
Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank the, uh, city and everybody that was involved with the events yesterday and, uh, the weather cooperated. It was a beautiful day. And, um, thank you.
I don't have anything more to add. It was a beautiful day yesterday.
Oh, uh, just want to give my, my thanks to Ryan. Uh, you worked so hard on that. And, um, it was, it felt cosmopolitan and it was just a blast. I thank you so much. I felt like you brought a lot of personality and art and creativity. And it just felt fresh and very on-brand. So I'm just so, so thankful to you.
I had so much fun on the dump truck that you've seen. It was such a blast. And I really enjoyed all of us together. I think we all had a great time together. Um, and thank you, Ryan, of course, for all the fun you had. Um, uh, the fun that you made for all of us. Um, and I, and I wanted to say a little thank you to Scott Herbert. Um, he took the time to give me a call when the barriers came in because he knows, he remembers me doing 10, 15 years ago or longer, running around trying to keep these streets closed with the little horses that we had and shooing cars away. And he says, Gregor, I wanted to call you, Eric, call you, you know, show you these. And they did a little demonstration with me with, uh, new little barriers that we have. Um, uh, he told me the cost of them, you know, and that's something that I think we kind of considered and would like to put it, you know, but we talked about putting it in the budget of about 80,000. Um, there were nine of them and that includes the hydraulic dumpster. Um, I thought they were really cool. He brought up the fact that we really do need 18 of them, which would be twice as much. And that would be twice the cost. So I would like to, you know, maybe entertain the idea of next year or maybe at our, you know, uh, strategic planning meeting to see how we can reach out to our business owners as an advertising opportunity. Um, those flaps that come up have that nice board on it. And I can just envision CVB would probably pay for one. Uh, Sagatuck Center for the Arts, they could trade those little signs out and have all their plays and, you know, listed for the year. So I think that might be, you know, something to consider. Um, because, uh, the more the merrier with those. Um, I think they're great barriers. I've seen them used at Holland and they're at the Holland Fruit Market there. Um, and, uh, wanted to thank him for that as well. So I had a great weekend and I had so much fun with everybody.
Echo those comments and, uh, thank, well, the comments about the, the Fourth of July, uh, thank you to Ryan and, and city staff. And I know that there was a ton of work. Um, it was absolutely heartwarming to be out there on the, on the dump truck, which was very old-timey and on brand. And, and it was really fun. And we are still a small community. We are a community. All, all of us were together. We have a lot of robust conversations and all that, but we were all able to come together and agree that we live in just a ridiculously special city that, um, we are very fortunate. And, uh, I just, I really felt great hanging out with everybody and really enjoyed my day.
Thanks. I, I think I would echo all the comments made by the council. I'm, I'm really encouraged that I, I, I'm sensing, um, movement for us to sort of try to find a way to create this summit meeting, maybe after the holidays are over, after through Labor Day, to get the right people in the room and try to, to, to solve this problem. Cause I think it is a solvable problem. Uh, it's just difficult when you're kind of right in the midst of, of this summer here, you know, it's, it's hard to sort of catch your breath and, and tackle it. But I'm, I'm hopeful that the output from this conversation leads to us kind of getting that summit meeting together and trying to get some of our tri-community partners to, to, to solve this because I think it's solvable. Um, and once again, um, I, I agree with council member Lewis that it would be nice to have the day off after the Fourth of July. Because my, I don't know, I don't know how Ryan looks. So after all, he, after all Ryan has done for the past few weeks, I don't know how he is so fresh and chipper because my, because my butt is dragging today. I, I'll just be the first to admit it. So with that, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion, Louis, second, Muncie. Uh, all in favor, please. Uh, it's a roll call, isn't it? Oh, your voice is okay? All in favor, please say yes.
Yeah.